Good evening, councilors. Today is Wednesday, November 29th. This is the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. The record reflect that voting members, Council President, Kennesaw Vasquez, voting member Brian DePena, our President, and the Chair Mark LaPlante. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have a copy of the minutes from October the 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're going to take a couple of items out of order. I'd like to, I'd like to take the legal office transfer appropriation off the items first. Let's see, where is that?
Two eighty-four?
Three eighty-four seventeen. Is there a motion to take that one out of order?
So move.
Motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Three eighty-four seventeen appropriation transfer. Good evening, Mr. Boddy.
Good evening, councilors. As I typically do around this time of year, I come before you, councilors, for a supplementation of my budget with a transfer from Free Cash to fund outside legal purchases, outside legal fees. And this year, as I anticipated at the time of the budget presentations, this year I'm doing what has been consistent with prior years, and coming forward to you, this time we're looking for an appropriation transfer from Free Cash in the amount of $750,000. We anticipate that that amount will be sufficient to carry us forward through the remainder of fiscal year 2018 for outside purchase legal services.
Are you at liberty now to tell us what you think those cases are that are going to require these funds?
I will, I will tell you in a very, in very general terms that the bulk of this will be spent for union negotiations and also for outside labor, the processing of grievances, civil service actions, bypass appeals, and employee discipline matters pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements. That will be the greater chunk of it. There was also a couple of other lawsuits that are being handled by outside counsel which are expected to come to trial in the early part of 2018. One in particular, we're anticipating will be tried in February of 2018. We're anticipating that it's similar to one that was tried by the same firm a year or two ago, which we won. We were very successful in that lawsuit. It was brought by a former employee. This is a similar one. We expect a similar result. We also expect a similar fee for the, for this trial, so about $30,000, $40,000 of that money is anticipated for that one case. And the balance are for the other miscellaneous cases, most of which are labor as well.
So right now, your city litigation account, is that where the money's going to be sent to?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The litigation account on page number forty-seven.
Yes, we're asking it to go to the litigation account, which is for outside legal services. It is for payment of sheriff and constable fees and payment of deposition transcripts. I might remind the council that we have a pending litigation, the Gilmet School case. And the Gilmet School case, just within the past month, I've attended two mediation, excuse me, two depositions. That was going to cost a few thousand dollars for each, and we did a day-long mediation, which is ongoing. So the expenses related to that are increasing, as are the expert witness fees that we're carrying for that case. So we're preparing that for trial. That will also be tried early in 2018, and we're expecting that the associated expenses for that.
Gilmet's when?
Right now, it's, it's looking at early 2018, February perhaps, maybe March, depending on the availability of the judge.
What's the, the meters running on that? Where are we right now for the amount of outlays that we've spent as a city on that? Do you know?
No, I can't tell you that.
Are we at several million dollars at this point?
In, several million dollars in expenditures?
Yeah.
Wait, in terms of the repair of the school, or you're talking to legal expenses?
Nope, I'm talking about legal expenses.
Uh, no, less than that, less than several million. Probably more than a million in terms of legal expenses, but those legal expenses are mixed. And to segregate them out, some of the legal work was done for the preparation of the bid specifications, the documentation for the lawsuit, so that we'd be able to prove our case at trial, for the oversight of the reconstruction work and things of that nature. We also have litigation expenses related to the school that go back before, well, right around the time of the discovering of the mold. As you may recall, we discharged our prior counsel on that case. So we've got several, several prior law firms that worked on this case. The expenses are considerable, yes.
And the only reason why I'm harping on this is a little bit more than the others is because I think this is, out of everything we're dealing with, the biggest ticket item that we're facing as a city, I believe, is Gilmet. It's been, the meter's been running out for several years, several administrations, and it's going to continue, right? So, and, and is the end goal here in February of next year, do you anticipate that going to be the end goal, one way or the other, on Gilmet, when the case goes into the court?
Am I anticipating, I'm sorry, because I'm getting, I'm getting echoing.
Is this better?
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe.
Do you expect that in the court case that's supposed to be commencing in February of 2018, that we will expect that that will be the, the end zone, the end game, and that we're not going to continue this? I'm not sure we need to go to executive session, but is it your anticipation that that's?
Well, the case is being handled in-house now, so that you're aware. I would anticipate if we try this case that there will be an appeal, because it's that kind of money. May, may not be an appeal with a lot of support or basis for an appeal, but I anticipate that, that, you know, even, even if we're successful, that one of the other sides will appeal it, as you would find in a case that might be worth a few million dollars. They'll appeal it in an attempt to try to destabilize any judgment that we receive in the hopes of convincing us to accept less than what the jury finds, or something like that. That would, that's a typical strategy in a case of this size. So do I think that the February trial will be the end? Not necessarily.
I'm going to stop on that question, because then we can spend more time on it. But other councilors have questions or comments or motions?
And up, through you, Mr. Chair.
And, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Boddy, so $750,000, and I, I understand the basics behind it, and I, and I will be supporting it tonight, but I do have a question. Will this be sufficient, or are we going to have extra cash left over at the end of the year? Do you think this is what is needed?
I, yeah? Obviously, it's as difficult to predict what our out-of-pocket expenses will be in a, in a year, as it is difficult to predict salt and sand needs for icy roads and storms. However, what we have done is, we have used the last few months of billing to try to find consistencies in what the amounts are, et cetera, et cetera, and then we've projected those over the course of the year. I think this will be sufficient. I do not think that I'll be back to you asking for more money. Do I think we'll have too much money? I don't think so. And I say this, what I did ask in preparation for coming here tonight to speak to you was, I asked for the last two fiscal years' actual budgets. So for fiscal years 2016, 17, and 18, my department for litigation expenses was budgeted in the budget process that, that takes place every May and June, $225,000, same as this year. Every year is the same. In fiscal year 2016, we got a supplemental appropriation in excess of a million dollars. And then in 2017, we got a supplemental appropriation of about $958,000. We did have some excess at the end of last year to the tune of maybe, I think it might have been 70,000 or 80,000, but we carried that over and we paid, you know, ongoing bills from that.
Okay.
So we, we did spend all the money, is my point, although when you looked at the year-end bills, you know, there was, there was an excess that we were able to carry over and pay some of the bills that came in, in July.
Yeah, no, and the, the reason for my question is because I want, I wish for us to be as conservative as possible.
Yes.
But at the same time, be able to be productive and pay any outstanding bills that we have. So I want to be supportive of the, the request, but I also want to be conservative at the same time.
It's critical for us to have the resources to be able to fight. The mayor will tell you that as, as much as we spend money, our opponents are spending money too. When we have our lawyers there, on, on the books, working for us, they're paying for their lawyers too, and that expense is something that they're sensitive to as well. But to, to, to not give us the resources to adequately fight, to hinder us by not having enough money to pay the outside counsel, could prove very difficult and strategically could, could harm us, I think, in terms of our positioning on a lot of these cases.
Okay, thank you.
So the money, the money that we're requesting is consistent with the, the past few years of actual spending, and it seems to be consistent with taking the last few months of bills, including some unpaid bills, and projecting them out through the course of the year. It seems like we're, we're, we're running about at the same rate.
Okay.
Which is actually good news.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to go to executive session for any reason? I feel comfortable. So I, I see that on our agenda, it does have executive session anticipated. My sense is that, if it's okay with the committee here, let's, let's forego that option and wait till the full council, and then if you're going to be back here at a full council, let's just do it all at one time, rather than us just getting a piece of it and.
I, I agree with that strategy.
So, so with that, is there a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I also want, yes, Mr. Boddy?
I was just going to say, so long as I'm here and you've taken this matter up, I have another brief one that's really like a two-minute thing.
I was going to do that, Mr. Boddy, but before I got that, I just was, I, I see that Council-elect Anna Levy, can you hear me now, is in the audience. Welcome, and thank you for being in attendance, and congratulations again on your hard-earned victory, and we're delighted that you're here tonight to take in all the discussions. If you, if you want to, as a council-elect, you certainly can't vote, but if you're, if, for your comfort, if you want to sit up here and kind of get used to it, you're welcome to, if that's what you like to, or you can stay there, it's up to you, whatever, whatever your preference is. Okay, you're welcome. Let's go back to Mr. Boddy, two, three eighty-three seventeen, I'll take that one out of order. There a motion made?
So move.
And second, all in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Go right ahead.
Counselors, this is a request to pay prior-year bills from this year's appropriation. And if I can just give you a bit of a background on this, we have two arbitrators' bills which remain unpaid from last year. We require of all of our arbitrators, and it's become very controversial, but it's been supported by, by the State Ethics Commission, we require them all to undergo ethics training. The reason for that is that there is an advisory opinion on the Ethics Commission website that says if you are a vendor being selected for your individual use, even if you're a part of a partnership or a corporation, but if we want your particular skills, then you are considered to be a vendor that is specially contracted with the city and has to do ethics training. We've battled with our arbitrators to get them to do it, and, because no other community in the Commonwealth does it. They've gone back to the State Ethics Commission and complained. The State Ethics Commission requested from the city our authority. What authority are we operating under that requires them to do this? We referred them to their website, and they said, oh, okay, you're right. So we, so the arbitrators are unfamiliar with this, because we're the only ones doing it, but the State Ethics Commission agrees we should be doing it, and as a result, now they are doing it, somewhat begrudgingly. We have two arbitrators last year, they provided services to us, and they gave us invoices, but we weren't able to pay them because they hadn't completed the training. One of them has, since the turn of this fiscal year, 2018 fiscal year, has completed the training. So now he's completed the training. We'd like to be able to pay him, since he's done what was a, a, an obstacle to our payment, so we'd like to pay him. And then we have another one who has yet to complete the training, but we think he will complete the training. And the, the, the amounts of money are fairly modest, it's a few thousand dollars, and we're just merely seeking permission from you to allow us to pay these bills, which we haven't paid, not because of any fault on the part of the city or the city attorney's office, but because the arbitrators themselves needed to comply with the law before we could lawfully pay them.
So where is this going to be paid from?
It would be paid from our litigation account, the same accounts that we, that that's another, another thing that we pay for out of that account. We pay for depositions, we pay for sheriff services, and we pay for arbitrators and expert witnesses, as well as outside counsel.
Any questions or comments by the committee? There a motion?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Boddy. Are we, are we done here?
Yes, thank you, council. Thank you very much.
Very good. I like to take, thank you very much, I'd like to take off the, out of order, document number three eighty, three seventy-eight seventeen, the Lawrence Police Department FY2018 Support and Incentive Grant. Is there a motion? Um, let me start, let me go back. Three ninety-three seventeen appropriation transfer from Free Cash to departments FY2018 budget for a quarter million dollars. Can we take that out of order?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The police chief is here, welcome, chief. Hope all is well.
Yes, sir. Good evening, councilors. I'm before you tonight for a request for an appropriation of $250,000 from Free Cash. This is to cover a deficit in the overtime line item of our budget. This is in my five years, five budget cycles as police chief, this is the first time I come before the council, ask for a supplemental budget. In fiscal years fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, I've been able to keep the operating budget in line with what our budget affords us. Much of these overtime dollars are spent on dealing with the ongoing opiate crisis and its byproducts, violence, homelessness, and increased overdoses and overdose deaths. We have used these dollars wisely in our, that have been afforded to us in our overtime budget, with impact patrols in high-crime areas. The patrols come in, in the form of both uniform and plainclothes police officers and investigations. Currently, we're in about $150,000 deficit. On many evenings, it should be noted, we have over 15 uniformed police officers on patrol. In order to maintain these staffing levels, we require this influx of money. Our current allotment for overtime is, I think, 450,000? Excuse me, strike that, 420,000? If I need to explain further as, as far as how the expenditures have been so far this year, I can do that.
If you already have it broken down, I'd be interested in taking and reviewing that.
Okay, we can make some copies for you.
That'd be great. Thank you. So are we already in deficit right now in that account?
Yes, we're currently in 150 thou, oh, you have enough copies?
Yes.
And that's going to grow?
Uh, yes, we expect it to.
By 100,000?
Yes, sir.
What impacts are the overtime having on other responsibilities for the police department? I'm, I'm hearing that we can't even get people on details, that there's very few people who really want to do overtime. I mean, what's the impact? What?
I mean, we see, and again, historically, our most difficult staffing time is, is in the summer months at the beginning of the fiscal year. We have dealt with the, with the staffing on the details, with an increase in special police officers. We did have, I don't know the number, the captain of patrols here, he may be able to answer the number of times that we have had to order people to work overtime. That obviously is, since the weather and the vacation periods are mostly over, has waned considerably.
I guess, but, the, this is a very, a very, very, not a superficial question, but a question from several thousand feet up. We're spending a lot more money on policing, and I know that the police officers are doing the very best that they can to try to deal with the problems that we're facing. And there is a common perception that we, despite these tremendous efforts, that we're still, still not being where we need to be or should be with respect to crime. That's a perception, I'm not sure that's reality, but it's a reality that, that is being perpetu, it's a perception that's been perpetuated consistently, whether it be social media, or talking on the street, or whatever. Can you talk to me a little bit about this? I mean, we're, we're now pouring more money essentially into the police department. Is that enough? I, it's a, it's a very philosophical bigger question, but I think, I think we need to address it at some level.
No, I, I believe that's a fair question. I think the types of crime that you see that grab the headlines are not necessarily where we've made our greatest strides. Overall, we're roughly down eight percent in, in overall crime, considering the increase in some of the violent crime that we've seen. It should be noted that we're, we've seen a 25% decrease in street-level robberies, and then that's backed up against a, a similar decrease in the prior year. So, again, in the last four years, it ranges between, combined crime categories is about a 35% reduction. So we've, we've seen consistently, we've seen that the overall crime, albeit the perception is, is that there is an increase in crime, the numbers don't bear that out. Again, that's a difficult message to get out past the headlines, the headline-grabbing violent crime that we, we've been experiencing, which is, which is, is an, an increase of, you know, that, over what we see historically. But again, it's, while very tragic, it is a small number, and that's unfortunately, again, what grabs the headlines. And I will say that, you know, some of those instances were perpetuated by the ongoing opiate crisis, and money that's, that's, that's an influx in, in that type of business.
Whenever we spend money on overtime, sometimes I, I have to ask myself, is that money better spent on actually bringing more officers, rather than spending more money on the overtime? And I realize you can't always eliminate overtime, it's necessary, as things happen between shift changes, and things happen, and they're unexpected, and we have to have overtime, there's going to be those expenditures. But when we're asking for a quarter of a million dollars, that is, in essence, additional, like, three, four, five, maybe four, police officers that we could bring onboard. And so I have to ask you again, given this quarter million dollars, would that money be better spent on more police officers, rather than more overtime?
Again, we, the council over the years, and with the, with the support of the, the mayor, has increased our staffing levels. Again, but due to the nature of hiring and training police officers, we have not come to our, our full budgeted levels of police officers. We're somewhere in the areas of a dozen police officers, dozen openings that still need to be filled. And so we're constantly hiring, we're unfortunately constantly hiring, in that hiring process, but we've not, as of yet, felt the full benefit of the levels of staffing that the city has allowed to have us maintain.
Did you say there were 12 openings right now in the police department?
No. Somewhere in that area, again, I could defer to, to Ms. Wall, but the, when I can say openings, currently we have seven police officers in the police academy. We're expected to put as many as six more in the police academy, based upon projected retirements. So, right there is a number of 13 that are not out on the street as we speak.
So because we don't, so.
I mean, that doesn't necessarily, again, a lot of this is proactive, the money that's spent in overtime, it's not to minimum staffing.
So wouldn't our salaries and wages be less if we've got 12 openings and 12 spaces unfilled? Shouldn't there be a certain?
Yeah, we, we, again, in, in the overall budget, we have not, we have not, the only category that we've exceeded our expenditures is in overtime. Our salary budgets right in keeping with where we should be to year-to-date.
But again, I'll repeat, if, if we are down 12 police officers, which, and we are budgeted for, to include those 12s, and we're not spending the money for those 12s, to me logically, we would have a surplus in the account where we would, would have the money for those 12 officers. Why can't we just take money that's currently there, perhaps, and shift it over to the overtime?
I don't think we have enough of a, of a deficit right now to cover that. It, our surplus, I should say, in, in that, those line items.
I'm going to hold off and allow other councilors to speak. Do you have any questions you want to ask? Come back if you want. You want to say something?
Yeah, I want to look at this first.
That, I'll be honest with you, that number surprises me. And I think that if, if I went back to let my people in my district know that we're, we're down 12, and we've been talking about how many police officers we have on there, that's going against the perception that we're fully, fully ma, person, fully staffed, and that we've got people doing, we're doing all that we can. When you're telling me 12, that's, that's like, close to 10%, probably a little bit less, of our police force is not even, and we're not even talking about I L D and other things, right? I mean, that's in addition to it, right? That are people, other, a police officer might be out for injured in the line of duty, or.
Right, and then you, exactly.
So you're 12 plus, there's, there's more, right?
I think currently we have maybe three that are out I L D.
We're looking at maybe 15 that we can't even call upon right now to.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's a challenge.
Wow.
Just to pace upon the way, you know, again, these are employees that you want to make sure are fully vetted, fully trained, and capable of doing the job, because essentially the city's going to be paying them and entrusting them with the powers of a police officer for the next.
Are we still out of contract with the police department?
I'm sorry?
Are we still out of contracts, are the police department under contracts, or no contract right now?
Out of contract, no contract.
Out of contract?
No.
Both the superv, the supervisors, as well as the, as well as patrol?
Yes, sir.
How long have they been out of, without a contract?
Six thirty fifteen.
So it's been over two years now that they've been without a contract?
Yes, sir.
And we're, it's out of, it's out of my, out of our jurisdiction on contract stuff, unless we're going to fund it, but it seems to me from sitting here, I don't know if money makes a difference to the police officers, if that's why we're having some turnover, or is it normal, these people turning 58, 59, 60 years old, and they're leaving, they're retiring, I don't know what's going on.
We haven't experienced much turnover yet, but, you know, that, maybe I should save that for a different forum.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're doing all that we can to make sure we keep, we're keeping folks there, we're trying to reduce attrition if we can, and we want talented and skilled people who do well in our city and keep them on the force. It's, it's something that's a concern to me, even though I really can't do much about it, that's not a function of the city council, but I just want to let you know that's a concern to me, and we need to get that fixed at some level, so the city and the, and the officers can work together, and they're, everybody's, they're doing the good job, we're treating them fairly, et cetera, but.
I appreciate that.
I don't know all the, I don't know all the details, it's why it's negotiations, I don't know all the details, but my hope is that we can get to a place where, where that's not, that's not a reason why we're having turnover. And I don't, again, I don't know the details, so. Any questions around, councillor, president?
Chief, do we happen to have the year-to-day expenditures for the police operation budget? I know we received an overview for the overtime specifically. I know we received an overview for the overtime specifically, but do we have the, the year-to-date for the police operations in general?
Ms. Wall will expand on the Munus report, which is...
Thanks, thank you.
...general, our ledger, or depicts our operating budget.
So, if you look at, I think probably the most important thing to look at, at the top of the report, where 9.5 pay periods into 26.1 pay periods of the entire year, so you'll see that that's 36.4% of the fiscal year. So, that's, when you look at the percentages on the right-hand side of the page, that's what we should be lining up to. So, councillor, what you were saying about the salary line item, that we should be behind, that we should have some savings because we have vacant positions, you'll see that reflected in both the first and second line. The second line is police operations, that's where we fund our police officer salaries from, so you'll see that we're almost a full percentage point behind where we should be for police operations. And again, that's because we do have vacancies that we, we are filling throughout the year.
So, Ms. Wall, very quickly here, so I see there's multiple lines through you, Mr. Chair, so the first, they've been clustered together, because we have police administration, police operations, the auxiliary police, so all of that is listed here.
That's correct. So, if you look, the, the easiest way to identify them is that first set of numbers, so 012110 is police administration, 012111, that's our largest, that's police operations, 012130 is actually our crossing guards, and then 012150 is animal control. You won't see the auxiliary police until you get into the purchase of service categories, which is in the later pages, because they're volunteer, they don't have any salaries, so they won't appear in our personal services.
Okay.
But if you look on page three, there's a total expenses, and if you look at the percent, at the top of page three, you look at the percentage on the right-hand side, it's 36.7%. So, again, even though we are $150,000 in the red in overtime, we're actually very close to where we should be in the fiscal year for our overall personal services spending, because there have been savings in other categories for vacant positions and things like that.
But I think to the question councillor that I planned asked earlier, specifically to 012111, we still see the 35.5% expense, which basically mirrors the payroll cycle, based on the information provided earlier, the 9.5 weeks. Shouldn't we have seen a reduction in the percentage there because of the number of officers that are currently not in the force, the 12 officers?
Yes, so I, I know it seems like a small percentage, the difference between 35.5 and 36.4, but it's on a $12 million budget, so 1% is $120,000.
So, it's a $120,000 savings...
Exactly, we're $120,000 behind where we should be in the fiscal year in terms of spending.
125.
Hundred and twenty?
120?
120, 125, it's an, it's an...
$120,000 in savings between 10 officers, 12, how many officers?
So, right now, it, it's 10. We have 135 officers, we have seven academy recruits, so they're, they are being paid, but they're being paid a recruit salary, so they make $600 a week. So, again, it's a savings because it's less than what a patrol officer makes who's come out of the academy. But so, we have 135 officers, we have seven recruits that are in the academy, we have three additional positions that are vacant right now, and then we're anticipating between three and six vacancies from retirements and transfers. So, that's where the, the chief's number, we have, we're probably going to have at least between six and nine additional recruits going into another academy.
Now that we, we talk about retirements, because we're, today we're, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I know we're talking specifically about overtime, but retirements for severance pay, are we going to need an additional transfer for that?
The, the one retirement that I, I know of right now, I don't believe so. Again, if we, if we have additional retirements, it, it will just depend on the amount of accrued time that, that those officers have. We have not had any retirements that I know of this year, so we, we have, I believe it's a $100,000 line item? Yes, we have a $100,000 line item for severance. So, again, with the, the one officer that we know of that's going to be retiring in January, it shouldn't be an issue. If there are additional officers that have large payouts, it, it may get close to that.
Okay. I think, you know... Mr. Chair, I feel a little bit more comfortable understanding the, the basics behind the numbers now. I just feel that, and I'll have a question from Ms. Wall here, or the chief. Is 250 going to be sufficient for the remaining of the year? We haven't, we're not even 50, we're at 36% of the year so far, which means...
Again, we...
You know...
I'll let you finish your question.
We overspend ourselves in overtime, so if we add an additional 250, that will help us pay the deficit that we currently have, and only give us a, a buffer of an additional $100,000. Is $100,000 sufficient from today until June 30th?
We are factoring in the potential of a staffing grant that we apply for every year. We should be notified in the coming weeks of whether we qualified and how much we qualified for, but in the past, it's been in the area of $800,000 to $900,000, and we've used that to make up deficits in the overtime budget.
Have there been any opportunity for saving within the personnel services line item to try to offset the, the transfer tonight?
As it stands right now, no, not enough.
Okay. And if the staffing grant does not come in, what are we looking at?
There would be initially a reduction in, in obviously some of this discretionary overtime, and then we would look at staffing levels, and then ultimately, if we weren't able to make it up, we would be before you once again.
Would it be possible to receive a, a detailed list of the officers that have received the overtime?
I guess we could break that down, yes.
Okay, I would like to see that list.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I don't have any further questions at this point.
Yeah.
Mr. Panay?
Yes, Chief, the crime in Lawrence is not possession. I remember a couple of months ago, in the summertime, you go to the radio show, Latino radio show, and you explain to the community, the crime is a possession, it's not possession. You have any plan for next year for, for doing something about the crime, because it's, if, if you ask to the people in the street, what are your preoccupation, or the city, everybody say, it's crime, every day, it's bad news, crime, last couple of days ago, you know what happened in Lawrence, and you have any plan for next year, because it's terrible.
Yeah, I understand that, again, that perception is out there, and we fight every day to try to reduce that perception. Again, that's why I'm before you tonight, that we want to keep doing the work that we're doing. We want to have more of a presence in the business districts, in, in other parts of the city with, with walking, more walking beats, and again, some of this will afford us the opportunity to do that. I can defer to the captains, and Captain Vask in charge of investigations, ongoing investigations that we have with our state and federal partners that are coming to fruition that I think will, will make an impact. We had one earlier, before this fiscal year, in May, where we saw a spike in violence, and we had a big operation, and we saw a reduction. We feel that we have a couple investigations in place that are going to have that same impact. Again, this is, this is something that, that changes every day, as far as the type of crime that we're dealing with, but again, I will reiterate that, overall, our crime rates are down. I know that that doesn't assist us in the perceptions that are out there. Again, I think a lot of it is due to the, the opiate crisis, and some of the younger people getting involved in that, and also having access to illegal firearms, and that's why we've continued to keep our relationship strong with the federal authorities.
About the contract to the police department, are you think, you have any conversation about Mayor Ophi and your department for, it's impossible, police working for two year and have a contract?
Again, I mean, it's the, the nature of some of those, those people that, that are affected by the opiate crisis are people that commit the lower-tier type of crimes, maybe break-ins and things like that, but we haven't seen that too much. Again, it's more on the upper level, where we see the people that are involved in the distribution of narcotics that are causing most of our violent crime.
That's very important, a contract, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, this is an appropriation transfer for $250,000. We currently have a deficit of $150,000, which means that we're, if this goes through, we're going to pay off and be back to equal, and we're going to have an extra $100,000. Where do you anticipate that extra $100,000 going?
That'll be mainly towards the impact patrols. We plan on continuing those on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings, as we have been throughout the fiscal year and prior to the fiscal year. Those shifts run from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, initially dealing with some of the hotspots where we see our, the potential for violence, some of the areas of congregation for people that have been identified as potential gang members, also due to the level of, we, we have had, we saw a huge increase, as we do every, almost every summer with the noise violations, that's tapering off. We plan on using those free times from 5:00 PM till 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock to do increased traffic enforcement, in and around areas that we've identified as problem areas.
In the perimeter park, that deals with the homeless?
Yes, sir.
The quote-unquote tent city, so is there still a presence, there's still something going on over there?
No. Again, I think we, we probably eliminated about 60% of that core group, and we have a 40% residual population, if you will, that are, that are throughout the city, and, again, we're dealing with them on a daily basis.
And the other big chunk on here is the detective investigation call-ins. What is, what does that mean? I mean, I, I mean...
Again, some of the major crimes, the major crimes that we've been seeing, and then, in addition to that, every sudden death that we have is investigated by the detective division. Those would include the, the overdose deaths, so a detective is, when they're not one, one-on-duty is called in, if we have a gunshot victim, knife victim, anything like that, and a serious assault is investigated by the detective division.
Now, I'm told that B&amp;Es are down, car thefts are down, there's a couple other...
Robberies.
Robberies are down, but the, the, the thing that grabs the high, the headlines all the time is obviously the murders, and the numbers are higher than they've been in considerable number of years, right? Is that a function of policing, or is it outside the policing function? Are these things going to happen anyway, and we can't stop these murders from happening? Or can the police actually have an impact on it? And it may seem like a simplistic question, and maybe that's more nuanced than I'm giving it credit for, but my sense is if someone wants to kill someone, I'm not sure a police officer on the beat is going to be able to stop that, but I'm not sure that's the, the right answer either. So, what's your take on that?
Well, again, yeah, that, that's a number, again, that has increased this year. We're historically around six or seven, currently at 10 homicides. The, the hope is that using these impact patrols, both marked and unmarked units, it's the proliferation, or I shouldn't use proliferation, the increase that we see in the availability of firearms is where we would like to make the impact in these areas that are hotspots, younger, younger adults carrying firearms illegally is what we look to target, putting the pressure on them on the street, even as simply as saying, you know, I'm not carrying it out on the street because there's the potential for me being stopped by a police officer. Take that item out of their hands, and not so quick to pull that out and engage in activity that can result in a homicide. So, hope is that between investigations with plainclothes officers stopping people, uniformed officers stopping people, we take guns off the street, arrest people, and also get the word out there that, you know, maybe I shouldn't be carrying this around, get rid of it.
So, I'm going to, we can be here all night because this is an issue. We're all elected, I think, every time we run for office, we say public safety is number one. I think if you ask every candidate, we always say that, so we could spend an entire evening. In fact, we have a committee that's lined up just for this alone, so then, so I'll just ask one more, more question regarding the murders, and, and why the numbers are so high. We're at 100, what, 142 police officers if we're fully staffed? I know that we're not fully staffed, but if we are fully staffed, we're at, what, 142-ish, right around there? Is that, is that accurate? What's the number? 145?
145, budgeted, how many do we have actually on the street? 135 right now, with a couple items. 135 on the street, with two or three injured.
Is it as simplistic to say, if we had 160, 170, 180, if we had more police officers, the, is there, is there a linear relationship between the number of police officers and the murders? The more police officers, the lower the, the lower the murder rate? Or is it regardless, these things are going to happen? I know you started answering that, but is there anything we can do to try to reduce that? Does that make a difference at all to number of police officers?
I think it does. I mean, we, again, I'd have to look back historically to kind of give you a more nuanced answer, but I think so. I think if you, if you have that many or more police officers, and they're directed in the right, in the right way, and looking at the right types of crime, investigating them properly, then you'll see a reduction, because you'll, you'll get those people off the street by the, before the, again, you're going to have those domestic situations where you're not going to have an opportunity to interfere or to stop them, but when you have the ones where it's someone either dealing drugs, or looking to steal someone's drugs or money, and they have access to a firearm, you're going to have more, more homicides. Again, now, that's my perception of it, with what I've seen in the last four or five years, but we've also have incidences where, in the bigger sense, overall crime, we're looking at numbers that are similar to when we were staffed with more police officers. So, the overall crime's dropping with, you know, hotter working, smarter police officers, but would you see much more benefit with more police officers? Yes, and I mean, again, I know I've said this before in front of this council, and the full council, and as well as public safety, you know, the national average or the national benchmark is, the latest census says 80,000 people live in Lawrence, two, two office per thousand, so 160. We were at those levels, I don't know, over 10 years now? We were at that, that level at that point, and that's, so the, the numbers of overall crime that we have now mimics it back then, but unfortunately, we've seen a level of violence that the city hasn't seen in, in a few years. a few years and that's what drives that perception. But I think we are currently doing what we need to do to, to keep that, to keep a lid on it and reduce it. And we can, we can do more going forward with the police officers as they come off being trained and, and get out on the street.
Yeah, I'm done. Is there a motion or any more comments?
I have. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, in this page, I see Pembroke, Pembroke Park, 37, 603, 50.
37,000? Yeah, that was when we removed the, there was roughly 40 homeless living underneath the bridge and we removed them from there.
Okay, okay.
So, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, once again, trying to be very conservative here and just bear with me as I talk this numbers. So I asked a few questions early as to, you know, ways to find savings. Historically, I've noticed that in the temporary salary line item, we have never spent over $25,000. We budgeted 50,000. So far this year, we've spent only $8,800. I think we could potentially have a $25,000 savings here that could help us reduce the 250 that has been requested from there. So I'm trying to find saving opportunity and, and then you will let me know whether or not it, it will work as some, as a, as a way for the police department to function as is because I want to be supportive but also conservative in the, in the expenditures.
Yeah.
Sounds fair?
Absolutely.
So the second is severance. We talked about, and I'm talking specifically about the, the police operations in severance. We budgeted $100,000 and we currently are potentially having one retirement and that one retirement, it is not likely to reach the $100,000 budgeted amount. Am I correct there? Okay. So we could potentially have another $25,000 saved, so that will essentially give us 50,000. And I have a question in reference to uniform allowance for police operations. We budgeted 181,100 and we spent 146,400 and we still have 34,700 left. Is that $34,000, it's not encumbered in, in our sheet? Do we expect to spend it or do we not expect to spend that amount?
We don't expect it.
It's not the uniform allowance.
It was in August?
Yeah.
No, we don't expect it.
We don't expect, so that gives us a, a potential saving of 84,700 within police operations alone that will not need a transfer within city council or approval by city council to be transferred because it's all within the personnel services, personal services line item, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct, Mr. Anello there?
I don't have all the information in front of me, but I think they've taken that into consideration when they requested the 250,000. We do meet on a bi-weekly basis about their overtime and discuss their overtime budget. So we're well aware that the 420,000 that we allotted them was not going to get them through June 30, but we wanted to see for the first five or six months of the year how we were able to manage it. The impact patrols and the, and the high crime patrols that the chief mentioned are important to the mayor, so we've been, you know, reviewing that in our bi-week regular meetings and we want those control patrols to continue to happen even though you're, you're kind of busting your budget. So they have taken into the, everything else in the, all those other line items in the police department's budget, we already counted on using the overall expenditure, I think as Amanda mentioned, it's 35 versus 36% or so where we have to be. And that's including all of their personal services accounts. So they've kind of, kind of factored that in. They still need, they're going to need 250,000 again through June 30 is their best expectation to continue the impact patrols.
No, and, and that I, I understand, but if we, and that's not taking into account the approximately 120,000 from permanent salary that has been saved, which is a 35.5%, we, we have a potential within that particular line, the personal services of a saving of 84,700, which will then go back to the general fund.
Correct.
Because we, we don't, we don't have it encumbered and we don't expect to spend it either. So the, which is 25 from the salary temp, 25 potentially from severance pay and 34,000 from uniform allowance. So that does give us a buffer of 84,000. And I'm not saying that I will propose this tonight, but I do think that we have 84,000 potentially on the table that could be used for purposes of overtime as well.
I agree.
Is the thought being followed here?
I agree.
Okay. So which means, me personally, I would prefer to support 200,000 because I think there's money within their own budget. I don't know if we can reduce this amount to 200. At the end of the day, we cannot tell them how to spend it. So that, that's where we are. We are here only to approve or not approve the transfer and I would not want to jeopardize the request by trying to make changes. So if it's not doable, I'm not going to propose it. If, if it's doable, I, I like to present it. So I don't know, I, I don't want to jeopardize the operations of the police department.
Well, I will say that if we, we calculated the 250,000 based upon an expectation of getting some money from a grant. As I stated earlier, if we do not get that money, then we'll use that and probably more if we sustain these, these levels of patrols.
Is it Burns, the Byrne Grant?
No, sir. It's the staffing grant from, from the state.
Okay. Mr. Peter?
Yes, I want to, I want to know about another item. How about on the same page, 80,256 and 35 cents. This is staffing. I don't want, because no explain nothing, only say staffing.
That is for minimum staffing?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we fall below the levels of minimum staffing and we have to hire more.
Meaning that you have to have, at any shift, you have X number of, how many police officers in every, any shift?
We would prefer to have six officers, one in each sector, one downtown, maybe an additional officer, that's what staffing is.
And so if you're short any one of those, that's where the money is, you're, you're paying from this 80,000 to hire somebody else to come in to get the staffing levels to where it should be, whether it's in the south sector, north sector, wherever, to get, to get to that six figure number of people, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
So is there a motion or?
Before I make the motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Anello. We have never reduced, at least during my tenure as a city councillor, the amount being requested. Is it something that the city council can do? Because I don't have my book of rules or city chatter with me and I don't recall reading about it. Can we, from your knowledge, do you know if we're able to reduce the amount?
I think we've done that before. I think the councillors have every, you know, have, I know since I've been here, I think every request came before the council. I think it happened one, even last year with the mayor, I think he asked for something and then I think you offered, I think the council offered a lesser amount which he was okay with. So I think it's the same thing that we'd want to do the same thing here is ask the, if there's a consensus on the council, ask the chief, can he get by with 200 instead of 250? I mean, you know, and if it's a, that would be a friendly amendment to a, to the item before you and then vote on it. But if it remains as is, then it just either fails or, or passes or fails.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to ask a question to either the chief or Amanda in terms of, given the explanation I've provided within your current budget in personal services, if a reduction by 50,000 were made, are we still able to fulfill the need within the police department? Given that the fact that we, we have the 84,000 approximately there.
But we have to come, we have to, we would have to come, on some of those items, we would have to come before you again, I think.
Right, on some of those line item, changing them from one-
No.
My hand to another.
It's with, so with, since it's within personal services, no additional transfer will have to be made in, it's an internal process, so you don't, you don't have to come before the city council. Because the funds are already there.
I don't know, I'd be taking a gamble if I said yes.
Okay. So if that's, you know, given, given that, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we transfer 200,000 from free cash to the police department fiscal year 2018, what was it? 2018 budget for overtime and I make that in form of a motion.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. So, discussion?
Is that okay? From a financial point, I just want to make sure that we, it's still-
So I, I think, and I think Mark's answered the question too. When we looked at the, the request for 250,000, we looked at our entire police operating salary line and so not, not just to, to get rid of the deficit and overtime and to give us additional overtime dollars, but looking at our entire budget and saying, okay, with the additional funding that we have in salaries, we think we're going to need an additional 250,000 on top of everything. So I think that reducing it by 50,000 will make us cut it close. And again, like the chief said, it's not, the staffing grant isn't guaranteed and the amount that we get isn't guaranteed, so we're trying to give you our best estimate of what we're going to need to get us through at the end of the fiscal year. Again, making some assumptions that we do have some additional funds available in our personal services budget that could be used for overtime if necessary. Again, we're, we're making the assumption that we hopefully will be successful with the staffing grant and be able to use that additional funding, but our, our best estimate was 250,000. So that's, that's what we're comfortable with.
I made my case.
So there's a motion at the table to, to amend the mayor's proposal by 50,000 and I just, I want to be supporting it. I just want to let the police department realize, of course, that it, there's a need to come back.
Definitely.
There's a need to come back. And this is just council using its prerogative to say, we want you to have the ability to get what you need to get done, but there's a certain rope that we're, we're not giving you the full rope, we're, we're shortening it up a little bit and if you need more, come back for more.
Definitely.
And certainly within the prerogative of the council to ask for that. And so if the council president thinks it's important, and again, I, I can't speak for anybody else, but we don't want to compromise anything either, so if there's a need, there's a need and I can only speak for myself, I'll be supportive of that if there's a pronounced need in the future. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it.
And again, thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing. Truly, I appreciate it. It means a lot.
We, and the police department appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's more, there's one more police item, I think. Document 37817, the FY 2018 support and incentive grant for 243,636. Is there a motion to take that out of order?
So move.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Ms. Wall?
Good evening again, councilors. The department is asking, we've been the recipient again this year of 243,636 to specifically support our 911 call center. The, the money is used to cover some of our call taker salaries. It also supports about $27,000 in consulting services and ongoing maintenance and support for our CAD system, which runs our 911 call center. And then there's an additional $1,500 that we've put in to the budget this year to maintain the HVAC, heating and cooling system in the, the dispatch center. Again, this, this grant comes specifically from the state 911 department, so all of the funds have to be spent specifically on 911 functions.
Any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I guess we'll go back to the top of the agenda items. Document 3817 appropriation transfer for more staffing temporary health nurse for 6,616.80 brought by Pat Ruiz. Is there anybody here to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chair members. Peter Blanchett, building commissioner for City Lawrence, I'm standing in for Pat Ruiz, who put this presentation forward. This amount, we need to have transferred. We last in fiscal 2017, we hired a, a nurse under a contract going into the, this fiscal year. We kept her on with the expectation that she was going to go into the full, full-time slot, which she didn't. We, we did keep her on for, I believe, five, six weeks longer into late August. So what we're doing is we'd like to take money out of our personnel account, which was originally allocated for the public health nurse, which we're not using now anyway, and use it to pay these already encumbered funds, to pay this company that we hired this nurse from.
So I'm just looking up in the budget, Mr. Blanchett, where the- Public Health Services, is that where this would be found?
This will, originally came out of professional services account. Now it will be, come out of the, the salary for the, for the public health nurse. That's correct.
Public Health Nurse, so this is going to- Public Health Services, 200, Professional Services. So it's a transfer from the salaries to Professional Services, is all this is, to pay for the more because somebody left and so this is just trying to tie us into the end of the year.
Basically, in a nutshell, Mr. Chairman.
So the obvious question is, is, is are we going to be getting into another nurse?
We are working on that, yeah. It's been posted, I believe, early on, we're looking into it.
Any questions, members of the committee? Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion has been made, the council's favorable recommendation has been made and it has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it.
Thank you, councilors.
Everything here is with the administration. We have a significant property tax classification hearing, which is going to take some time. We also have a number of other items from the Office of Planning and Development. It doesn't make a difference to me which order we do these things in. Is there a preference between the members of the, or from both departments as to go first?
Mr. Chair, given that the three documents from the Office of Planning and Development are grants, the likelihood that we will accept it faster.
Yeah.
That, even though there are three documents, I think we will move with them much faster.
Is there a motion to take document 38617 out of order?
So move.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So this is a Mass Alliance Teen Pregnancy Grant for almost 50,000, 49,950. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair and councillor members. So I'm stepping in today. My name is Wilma Martinez Dominguez and I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Lawrence and today I'm stepping in for Soufink, our finance manager. And so we have about three different grants today to present, but this one has to do with our Mass Alliance Teen Pregnancy. It's a grant that it comes from the Office of the Adolescent Health and it passes through to the Community Development Department. That it's a fiscal agent for the Mayor's Health Task Force. This is the third year of this grant, the final year. The funds are primarily to pay for salaries, meeting- The funds are primarily to pay for salaries, meeting, you have the, I probably have it in front of you, meeting coverage, you know, office supplies, some overhead, and then also stipends for the youth advisory board.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vasquez.
Are there any matching funds?
Not for this one, no, there's no matching funds for this, this, this was a collaborative grant application, we, we did with the Mass Alliance Teen Pregnancy, and actually, it's, we're the only one in the state that received this pass-through money, it was done to do work specific in Lawrence to address issues around teen pregnancy, which is still, was still fourth in the state, sexually transmitted infections, and basically promote evidence-based curriculum, train people so that it could be replicable moving forward, not only with the school system, but also youth-serving organizations, and also to create a referral network that is user-friendly for youth who may need access to education, information, any contraception, anything like that, so it's really, it's, it's sort of multi-pronged approach, and this is the final year, unfortunately, it was a five-year grant, but I guess the federal government's discouraging, it's, it's not really looking at refunding projects like this one, to the point that Mass Alliance Teen Pregnancy, it's closing its doors in July, it's the only statewide organization that does this work, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, could you say that last bit again, because I couldn't understand you completely, something about, somebody's closing their doors in July, what was that?
Mass Alliance Teen Pregnancy, it's a statewide coalition, it's the only statewide coalition that does this kind of work, and it's the applicant, that is the applicant in this grant, we're just a pass-through, but they're closing their doors after many years of service come July first of two thousand and eighteen because of the lack of funding, federal government is not really looking at teen pregnancy as an issue, so it's really sad, but.
So what is this?
This is the final year, this is just to authorize to expend the money, the grant has been received.
So we're not going to see this again, because this program's going to be extinct after this funding cycle?
This, yes, come July, June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen is the last one of this one, that doesn't mean that the task force is not going to continue to look into teen pregnancy prevention or any other efforts throughout our work, it's just that through this, this funding mechanism, it's not going to occur.
Okay.
Mr. Sheriff, if there's no further questions, I'd like to send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
There's a motion.
Second.
Has been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
So the next one is a municipal leadership and wellness grant, it's, this is our fourth year, I believe, of receiving this grant, it goes in three-year cycles, and it's through the Department of Public Health, looking at communities, promoting healthy eating and active living in communities by, you know, implementing policy systems and environmental changes that make the healthy choices the easy choices, this is primarily to do policy work, and the funds are only to pay for salary, that's just the way they're designed, so they complement other efforts that we're doing around healthy eating and active living. This is, again, just to request authorization to expend the funds for this fiscal year.
I'd like to make a motion to send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Three eighty-eight.
Thank you, and then the last one is same request, authorization to expend the funds, this is for an emergency solutions grant that came through HUD and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and it's basically something that we have, a part of funding that we haven't received since two thousand and three, basically because these funds are created based on a formula grant, and we fell out of the formula grant, so probably this year's point in count, numbers of homeless that were found probably triggered that, that's what we anticipate, I mean, that's what we guessed, but the grant is for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and it's basically to provide a range of services to chronically homeless individuals, people who are either in shelters or living in places that are not habitable. These funds are basically, could be used for different things, but we're looking to use them for rapid rehousing, so people that are currently in shelters, individuals who are currently in shelters can access these funds as, along with case management, it could help relocate some of them, and basically provide a continuum of care, so allows for some spaces available now for shelters for new homeless people while we're working with those who are in shelter to find secure, permanent housing. Just basically housing relocation and stabilization services.
So what does that mean, are we spending money on hotel rooms, or what does that mean?
No, what it means is basically there's going to be a request for proposal put together, and an organization that's capable of doing this work will, it could be a shelter, it could be any other entity that has the expertise, and they will work with those individuals who are either already sheltered to help them get into permanent housing, it could be through rental assistance, it could be through other mechanisms, it's been a long time since we had these funds, but they're basically to help assist those people, individuals who are in shelters so that they can find new housing.
We just have one shelter in Lawrence, correct?
I'm sorry?
How many shelters do we have in Lawrence, I'm thinking of the one at the.
That qualify as shelter, there's probably Daybreak, Daybreak is the only shelter that's for individuals.
Right.
At Lashrose House, it's primarily for families, so these funds come from, from the government, they're not really targeted to create shelter, but rather assist those who are in shelter to relocate and secure more permanent housing and other services.
Is that going to be taking place within the city boundaries, or outside the city boundaries, or both?
This is for Lawrence, this is for Lawrence, yeah, I understand, probably you're asking, there's a lot of people that are here that are not from the area, people who are here in shelters in Lawrence could have access to these services and then be relocated, I don't believe they have to be relocated within Lawrence, but I can verify.
That's the question, so, so if you have someone who's doing all this stuff, and we don't have a place, if we don't physically have a place to put them, are we, does this grant allow, allow it to look outside of the city, city boundaries for another location?
I would imagine so, because this is a federal fund, and it's, it doesn't mean because you're homeless, living in Lawrence, you cannot relocate somewhere else. There's two pieces to this, yes, there is a piece that does, you know, provides financial assistance, but I think the strongest piece to this is the agency that is awarded, the RFP can work and do case management and make sure that the individuals receive, you know, have employment, I mean, there's other pieces to make sure that that person can actually remain in permanent housing, those are the most important pieces, I think, to these funds than anything else, they have to exhaust any other rental assistance funds that may be availa, available, but if in the community through other programs, if they do go through that process and they don't, there's no funding availability for them, then we'll look into renting.
This is our, and the last question, because we want to get moving, what's the, what's the homeless coordinator individual, Nilly?
Two different, yeah.
So what, what, so, what impact, where's the nexus between what his job is versus what this grant's going to be doing?
His, the homelessness initiatives coordinator was really created to deal with the chronically homeless, his job is not to do case management, his job is to create a coalition, do coalition building, and make connections, and bring people to the table, and look at root causes that are, are creating this, this issue that is happening, and then create policies, create, like for instance, the winter protocol that we've been talking, not the winter, I'm sorry, the, the under-the-bridge protocol that, that came into place that actually helped us remove a lot of the people that were, they're living in encampments, those are the things that the homeless coordinator is supposed to be doing, he's not supposed to be doing case management, he brings people to the table, he may be very well working with an organization that gets the RFP, because it made sense, and we have a very active homeless, homelessness initiatives working group, but two different things, the, we as a city do not provide services, we're not a, a service provider, this is why this has to be subcontracted, so.
Okay, any other questions or motions?
I, I, I support the idea, but it also, it's also concerning simply because of the fact that the funds are for, ideally Lawrence residents who are currently homeless. When the word gets out of Lawrence, I'm concerned that we could have an influx of homeless individuals from other parts of the, the state or outside of the state of Massachusetts coming into Lawrence seeking this type of assistance, so I love the concept, but I'm also afraid of the concept, how will we address that, because I, I could see a potential influx.
Yeah, HUD has very prescriptive processes, I mean, this is the one thing that they have very strong, very strict regulations, this money, we didn't seek it out, it was granted to the city, so that was, just so you understand, it was given to us because the numbers were high, we're assuming that's what it is, we don't know if that's the case, but we're in entitlement community, we get these funds after like fourteen years of not having this source of funding to help with the homeless situation. Homeless, I mean, think about it, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and some of it goes to administrative, I mean, I don't know how much we can stretch these funds, and it has to be through an RFP, I mean, it, I don't think that we may get an influx, but we already have people who are living in, you know, who are homeless, who are living here in our city, or who are in shelters here in our city, that may have access to this, so, I mean, there's very specific way that you need to, the requirements are very strict, I mean, there's, there's, there's no way you can just get someone who's coming from another city coming here, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a process for it to verify the person, who they are, the information, income, I mean, the situation, why are they homeless, where do they come from, I mean, all of that, but half of that work has already happened if they are in the shelters locally, and so it'll be a collaborative work between the shelters locally and the organization.
Do, so, just for clarification purposes, through you, Mr. Chair, director, do you mention, we did not apply for this grant?
No, HUD actually said, you know what, this is based on whatever formula, because we made the formula this year, they use a formula to assign, allocate the funds, we were, we received these funds, don't get me wrong, the funds are needed, because if you think about it.
I think they're needed.
People are overextending their, their stay at the shelters right now, which don't allow for spaces to become available for people that need the space, and so this helps sort of get that continuum of care going, and allowing the, shelter beds to be available to people that are needing the beds right now, and if you look at the situation with the chronically homeless, first of all, you already know that a lot of the people that are homeless under the bridge and in encampments, it's not, they're not easy to shelter.
No.
These are the people that are very difficult to shelter, but let's say our homelessness initiatives coordinator figure out a way, someone reaches out, it'll be nice to put them in a shelter in a space, but that's the problem, there isn't enough space in shelters, especially for individuals, especially for individuals with mental health, chronic, chronic health conditions, and, and also substance use, because that's the other piece, it's a complex, a very complex population we're trying to serve here.
This is going to sound, I don't know if you recall, Mr. Chair, we, at one point we had a conversation with a coalition that came from the state in reference to grants, and I said, there are certain grants that I'd like for us to receive, there are certain grants in which I am hesitant for the city to receive, and this is one that I, I know we have a need, but I hesitate with an answer, simply because I feel that it will solve a problem, but it could also potentially generate an additional problem, there's a fine line to walk for me, and I'm sure as a director of the department, you feel the same way, so I honestly don't know how I will cope tonight.
Well, rapid rehousing is something that we need to look into, it's a program that's evidence-based, and there's a lot of different projects around the United States that are doing similar work, but this is not a solution, but it's definitely one more tool that we have in our scenario to, to really deal with, with the situation, so.
I, I'm not usually in an uncomfortable situation to make a decision, for some reason I feel uncomfortable with this one.
Motion to, yeah, not a recommendation.
With, yeah, I'll send, I'll, simply because I feel that it needs to move, I'll follow the, you know, the suggestion by our, our chair, I'll, I'll make a motion to send it to the full council with their recommendation, that way I'll, I'll see if I could find some time to meet with the director and, and get a better understanding.
Absolutely.
Make that a form of a motion.
Motion to send it without a recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, I just want to make this one a real quick comment, there's a school of thought in our city that there are, there are very strong powers that don't really want us to succeed, that they want to perpetuate the poverty that's in our city, we don't want to grow a middle class, because their political agenda is such that if we keep the city the way it is, right, then there means whatever it is they're trying to accomplish gets accomplished, and, and, and when, when you say, my antenna goes up when you say, we didn't even ask for this, and they started giving us because of some formula, fine, I guess, but it, but that feeds to that school of thought, which is, how can we ever grow a middle class in the city when the federal government doesn't really want us to get to that point, while we're, we're losing it, we're constantly losing that battle, we're constantly losing it, and this perpetuates what we're trying to do, is we're going to have, we want to have some, and we're going to be talking about taxes here in a little bit, but we want to have some balance, we can deal with our poverty, we can deal with the folks that are on there, but we also want to grow a middle class, we want to see an, an, an expansion of the middle class in our city, we want to create wealth in our city, we want the people who have, who don't do so well to stay in our city and buy a nice house and stay in our city, but create, but expand that, and this does not, doesn't do anything, I don't think, in that, in that, in that, in that direction, so I'm going to support the council president, it's just a question, and, and we, it's a bigger question, and we're, we're not prepared to solve this evening, but motion's been made, and it's been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, that just, one of my pet peeves, and the council president.
Thank you very much, Director, you did great, thank you.
Yeah, it's not a chew, uh, yeah, yeah.
It's not personal.
Um, is it okay we just take a, a ninety-second motion to, to recess, I want a glass of water, that's all this is about.
So move.
Motion to recess, as it's made, seconded, all in favor, say aye, the ayes have it.
Aye. Aye.
Now, we're gonna split it up, right?
Right.
All right, we're back?
Ready.
So, motion to come out of recess? Motion made, aye. Second in favor, say aye. The ayes have it.
Good evening, councilors. Um, tonight, the Board of Assessors would like to present to you our tax classification presentation for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. So, hopefully, this will provide you with enough information and relevant data for you to choose a factor and look at the various alternatives. The factor which will eventually be adopted by council will determine the levy that each class will be responsible for. The maximum allowable shift is a hundred and, is one seventy-five. Um, Lawrence has had a split tax rate since nineteen eighty-two, meaning that we have a tax rate for residential and a commercial rate versus a single tax rate. There are a hundred and ten communities in the Commonwealth that do have a single tax rate. Cost, it does not affect the total number, total dollar, um, amount of collected from property taxes at the end of the day. Um, the assessment data and the assessed values are how the whole, how we start our whole process. So, the next couple of slides will, will go over the, um, how we determine the values, the levy proposition two and a half, and how new growth are determined. And quite a few taxpayers will always come into the office asking, "How did you come up with our value? How, how did you arrive at this assessment?" Um, the first thing that we do is we take all the sales that have occurred in the calendar year. Um, we run on the fiscal year in the city, but per purposes of assessment, um, the state is, mandates January one assessment date, sales of arms-length sales from January one, two thousand and sixteen to December thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. That, that is further analyzed by the type of home, a single, two-family condos, and it's broken down even further that into neighborhoods. Um, this year, the city has seen an increase, sorry, um, across the board. Every single, um, type of property that we've seen an increase. But, the total of the residential, we've seen over thirteen and a half percent. Commercial has seen a seven-point-seven percent increase. Industrial of five-point-seven, and personal property has come in at two-point-one percent. The average home for the three, sorry, for the single family over the last past years has seen a steady increase. Um, we've seen it back in two thousand and sixteen. It was a hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred, which was a one-point-three-five increase from the prior year. Two thousand and seventeen, we saw a six-point-seven-two percent increase to a hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, for two thousand and eighteen, we've seen the biggest increase so far, a ten percent increase, increasing the average single-family home in the city to two hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. All our values have been certified by the Department of Revenue, and this must be done before we can send any tax bills out. In preparation for our levy and our proposition two and a half, we are taking the levy from the prior years, adding amended growth. Um, and amended growth would be anything that we, we missed out on a tax bill. This year, we added, um, a little over twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, for instance, if, if we taxed an entity that was a hundred percent exempt, um, then we found out later that a portion of the building that they were doing, they were conducting a business and they were generating income from that. The state allows us to go back and tax that entity at what it would have been if they were taxable from the get-go. Um, our new growth, um, this year... Um, sorry, I should've gone to that slide first. Um, our new growth this year has come in at one point, one million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, um, which is also allowed by the Department of Revenue to include when we are, um, looking at the levy for the tax bills. It's broken down, the new growth eat, by each class of property, the residential, commercial, industrial, personal property, and we come up with a total. In order to come up with the certified new growth, we take the actual growth number and times the prior year's tax rate for that class. So, the residential would have the fifteen thirty-four from last year, and then the commercial, industrial, and personal property, we're using that as, that would be the commercial rate from, from last year. Um, a lot of the new growth also includes any lot splits that this was done in the prior year. Any new construction, any new, um, permits that were pulled that would increase the value of the property. Our new growth was certified, um, by the Department of Revenue on November fourteenth. Um, and this prior chart here, that'll do, just gives a, a three-year breakdown of the values and how they've increased over the years with the percentages on the side. So, you can get an overall view of, of how much it has, um, really increased over the last three years. Um, this slide here will give you a breakdown of the exact number of parcels that we have, single families, and the assessed values of all the, um, property classes that we have. And this is known as the LA floor, which we must submit to the Department of Revenue every year in order to be certified. Um, and now, Maria, who's our other assessor, she's going to do the presentation.
Hello. Uh, this graph here, it's, um, if the city council decides to choose residential, um, to choose a single tax rate, uh, for residential, commercial, industrial, industrial, and personal property, uh, you can see in the graph that it shows the percentage of each class. The burden usually, um, goes to the residential. This is, uh, like, this slide shows the history of all the tax shifts over the years. As you can see, we shifted the burden to the maximum allow, which is at the one-point-seventy-five factor for FY twenty eighteen. Um, you can see it was left blank because we still have not decided on what factor is gonna be chosen. On this slide, the tax-based levy growths shows you where our, shows you where our growth is coming from. From residential is four hundred and eight thousand, commercial, three hundred and seventy-one, and industrial, nine sixty-eight. As you can see, our growth comes mostly from personal property, which is mostly bit, new businesses, utilities, or telecommunications. Um, and most of them, the values are verified by the Department of Revenue. And this one shows that the led, the FY twenty-eight levy limit, which is based, um, on last year's levy limit plus amended growth of twenty thousand, five oh six, and, which is the omitted bills, plus a proposition of two and a half, and the, and adding the new growth. The total maximum allowed to raise for FY twenty eighteen is seventy thousand, seventy million, I'm sorry, seventy million, six hundred and sixty-one. And this stays allows us, but we only raised sixty-seven million. This information over the, this is information over the years on an average single-family home for FY twenty eighteen. Uh, we used the, for FY twenty eighteen, we used that one-seventy-five factor that states allows us to use. Just to show you how much it will be if we choose, uh, the one-seventy-five factor on a single home rate. Um, the tax shift impact we've broken down from residential factor from one-point-sixty-nine all the way through one-seventy-five, uh, sliced thirteen, fourteen, fifteens, all the way through nineteen, I give you the different factors with the different tax rate for each, um, single-family home, condominiums, fam, two-family, three-family, commercial and industrial. The higher the factor, the lower the tax rate for the residential property will be. And the lower the factor, the higher the tax rate for commercial. All right? Uh, this twenty is just, um, a comparison of all the... I'm sorry, I went too fast. This one is, this chart is a comparison of all the fiscal year for FY eighteen between single-family homes and commercial. As you can see, you can tell, like, an increase for, if we choose the factor of one-seventy-five on a single home, it'll be a hu, an increase of a hundred and two. And, and it'll be a decrease of twenty-four for commercial. And then you see, can see the difference of all the different factors from one-sixty-nine through one-seventy-five. Uh, this is, we kinda like did a slide to show you, like, the surrounding cities, but we use for FY twenty-seventeen, the tax rates on a single-family home, uh, because we all right now still working on, on the, to choose a factor for FY twenty eighteen. And our last slide shows you, uh, the timeline, deadlines, before we can submit the numbers to the state for certification and issuing of the, sending the third quarter tax bill for FY twenty eighteen. Any questions?
Yeah, so the, the factor one-seventy-five is the most friendly factor for, uh, single-family homeowners, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and, but there was a promise, I think, in the last budget that we weren't gonna raise taxes at all, but even with that, still the budget, even if we go with the most friendly amount, it's still a hundred and two-dollar increase. Now, granted, over a twelve-month period, it's not a lot of money, but it is an increase. Can, can you explain how we got to an increase when we were saying last year we weren't raising taxes or we weren't gonna get more revenues?
Well, I think you can, uh, again, see on slide where they had the excess capacities, page...
That's right, we did go.
Uh, page eleven is the, is the total levy limit. And then, the levy amount that we put in is sixty-seven million. So, there's an excess capacity of three-point-six million dollars. And you can see in red on, on page eleven, one million, six sixty-three, six oh three was the additional, uh, increase between the prior year. But, if you notice on, uh, in the middle of the page, you'll see a million, six eighty-seven, eighty-four. That's the amount that we could've increased, uh, which is the two-and-a-half percent increase, and we didn't, this number does not include that. That's why we have an excess levy capacity geared at, uh, for the last several years. It's now up to three-point-six million. So, we did not go up the two-and-a-half percent property tax increase that were allowed, but we did go up the new growth factor, which is a million, seven forty-nine, two sixteen. And that's why there's an additional, on average, there's an additional increase to everybody. But, we did not go up the two-and-a-half percent. It's not in here. So, remember, the total assessed value, um, for residential has to be spread out amongst all the taxpayers. And when you do it on average, it looks like there's a hundred and four-dollar increase. And then, commercial, residential, they're getting decreases because again, the levy itself has to be split amongst all the taxpayers. But, that levy does not include the two-and-a-half percent increase, which we're allowed to do, and that's what we, uh, it's amount, mounts to roughly one-point-seven million dollars that we did not increase our budget.
So, just so I'm clear, so if we go with the friendliest version, which is factor one-seventy-five, the single-family homeowners will have an in, average increase and they're available a hundred and two dollars. The least friendly, most hostile, least friendly to the businesses is that same factor, one-seventy-five, but they're getting a ta, they're getting a average reduction of this one, twenty-four bucks. And I'm still, it's still lost on me how we got there, why we can't change that, that factor. So, that there is no increase for the single-family homeowners, but there might be a slight increase for the...
Well, you're only allowed, uh, maximum is one-point-seven-five. So, what you're asking for is you'd like to have, shift even more. You just can't.
We can't do that.
Maximum is one-point-seven-five. Um, we, you know, the assessor showed one-sixty-nine to one-seventy-five because we've never gone, you can't go above one-point-seven-five. That's the statutory limit.
Okay.
You can go below that, but you can't go above that. So, I think by choosing the one-point-seven-five, the most advantageous to residential property owners, that's what they're sho, trying to show you here, and the average single-family tax bill would see an increase of one-oh-two. Some people will see decreases, some people will see larger increases depending on the value of your home and multiple other factors. So, it i, it is just a math issue when, when you, we didn't go up on the tax bill, uh, the two-and-a-half percent, but we did increase for the new growth. So, when somebody put a addition onto their home, they get an additional bill. That's factored into this average. So, that's why you're coming up with this hundred, two-dollar average. That's why you're coming up with this $102 average, even shifting 1.75.
Oh, that's factoring, that's factoring in new growth.
That's correct. It's the total, it's the, and I think they have it here on one of the slides, yeah, on page nine, you'll see the total value, total assessed value is 3.8 billion. The residential value is 3 billion. The commercial, industrial, and personal property is only 759 million. So that's the, that's the breakout of the, of the, the percentage of the total levy, of the total value. The levy, the total levy, we're, we're, that we budgeted when we put the FY 18 budget together, we're only going to assess them at 67 million in tax levy, when it could have been a higher number, higher by 1.7 million.
I, I get enough of it, I'm not fluent, but I get enough to get, to get by on it. What surprised me is on 20, page 21, with that one, I, I was surprised to see that even Springfield has a lower amount. I thought we were the lowest in the entire Commonwealth for our average taxes. We're pretty low, but they're a little bit, a tick lower than us.
Yeah, I think you, you know, Springfield, Western Mass's assessed values are a little bit less. Even though we're in, it's, it's obviously a lot less than the Boston area and our surrounding communities, out in Western Mass, it's even lower. They don't have that Boston, you know, the sub, we're, we're kind of a suburb of Boston, even though we're, we're a low-income, but Springfield's even further from Boston, so I think that's why they're lower.
Can you give us, every year we take, to me, this is where we, we take the pulse of, of our city's finances at this point, every, every December, I kind of, we kind of get a, we look at these numbers, we get the sense of the city's health as far as its ability to raise revenues, its ability to see what our property values are. Can you give us a summary as to the city's health, financial health, based on these numbers?
Well, these numbers are based on the FY 18 budget that we passed in June, and, and we passed that budget without the limitation of Prop 2 and 1/2. Since we passed that budget, our free cash has been certified, and our free cash, it was, was 14 million, it was 12 million the year before. Have some of the numbers with me, I think I brought it with me. But you know, we have, we've had steady increases in free cash. We've had the results of operations last year contribute to our free cash. I guess I didn't bring it down with me, but I do have a, a printout of historical free cash numbers, you know, for, since 1980 or whatever. And our, so our free cash has been steadily increasing. Our financials have been, presentation to Moody's and S&amp;P every year, financials get better every year. As you, as the, as you may recall, the council passed a few stabilization funds last year, so we have a, an OPEB, a small OPEB stabilization fund. We have a stabilization fund for 111F and, and workers' comp, and also uncompensated absences, which is, kind of came up tonight about the severance packages, if any, the departments are short, and they don't have enough severance budgeted in their budget. We have a stabilization fund, we have to come back down to the council, but we might, we have 100,000 in there, I believe, if some department is short of 10,000 or 20,000, we could make a transfer and help them out. So all those things help us operate.
I want to shift, I want to shift you direction a little bit. We're talking about the amounts of money that our housing costs have gone up. There's some numbers here that says our residential assessed values is 13.6 percent, commercial 7.7. What I'm trying to get a sense on, a sense with is, we're talking about health, are we pricing ourselves out of the market? Are our young people able to buy houses in our city? Are we, are we still the, the best bargain in, in the area? I'm trying to get a sense from you, from the, kind of the big picture again, is what do those numbers mean? As we're, we talked about middle-class earlier, is this helping, hurting our growth in the middle-class in the city? Can you, can you give us a kind of an analysis?
Well, I, I, you know, we're talking assessed values here, and again, on page 21, you could see the average single-family tax bill from Lawrence, Methuen. You can see the average tax bill in Lawrence is less than 3,000, Methuen's 4,000, Haverhill's 4,000, Lowell's 3,500, we're, we're lower than them. So if you're, if you're looking at some of the surrounding communities and similar on our size, you know, it's great that property values have increased, and, and those who have bought homes, they can see their value of their home is increasing, but we're also a, a pretty good bargain within our, our immediate area. So for those who are looking to, to buy a home, Lawrence can certainly, has, has a bargain compared to some of the surrounding communities. I, I think the assessors can speak better to the specifics of, of what all the numbers mean, because that's what they deal with on a, on an annual basis, or daily basis, the assessed valuations and, and dealing with the state and getting this, the valuations approved. They have to prove their numbers every year, so that, every five years now, there's a, we have to, the state has to certify that our numbers are, are, are close to full and fair value.
My last question, I think, on this is, Haverhill made the news recently, when their mayor said, we're going to use, and I guess I, I'll call the question, I didn't read the complete article, but my understanding is the mayor said in Haverhill that they would use some of their free cash, and they were going to be able to use that to try to reduce the taxes paid by the property owners in the city. Is that something, I mean, that we're, we would consider here?
Well, that's something normally done during the budget time, and when we did our, when we put your, when you put your budget together, you can use a, take a vote of, which I think is what you're referring to in Haverhill, take a vote of, hey, let's use $1 million in free cash to reduce the tax rate. Unfortunately, we have an overseer here, so that wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it because it's using one-time free cash, which is a one-time resource for ongoing services. So if you subsidize your budget a million this year, what if you don't subsidize a million next year? You kind of get caught in that conundrum. So it's not a good business practice, but many communities do use it. It's not recommended by the Department of Revenue. Our overseer, I'm sure would, what we could, you could ask him yourself, but our overseer would be against using free cash to reduce the budget. However, having said that, we did not go up the two and a half percent. So we reduced the tax bill by 1.7 million, again, not on the advice of the overseer, but he understood, and, and allowed us to put that together. So we did, as opposed to many of these communities, they'll go up to two and a half percent, and then they'll see what their free cash comes out with, and maybe they'll decide to reduce their budget at a later date. But in our case, we've already passed our budget, our budget is already 1.7 million less than we normally would have submitted it. And so, so that's all we're having tonight, and the city council is asking for the breakout of how we're going to send those bills out. At the time we pass our budget, that's when we should use our free cash as a resource to reduce the, the tax rate, if that's the, if that's the wishes of the, of the administration and the council.
I don't want to monopolize all the questions, is, anybody else have any questions on this, on this matter? Comments? Are we prepared this evening to make a recommendation? I mean, I, I feel comfortable making a recommendation, and I'll tell you why. It's, Council President, you were, we were together at MMA back a couple of years ago now, we talked about, we talked about how tax policies don't really impact big businesses as far as bringing businesses in. They're going to come here for quality of life, some of the amenities, things like that. They, they let us know that when, when businesses look to relocate or to expand, it is a factor, but it's not the most important factor. My concern, though, is with small businesses, not necessarily the New Balances of the world, and not necessarily the bigger companies, the Gem Group and other big organizations in our city, but the smaller mom-and-pop businesses. I'm in favor of reducing this as much as possible. I'm just wondering, does, what kind of impacts a less friendly tax rate is to a small business? That's the balancing act that I'm trying to figure out in my head. They're going to get a small reduction anyway, so it seems. Is, is that enough? Are they feeling a crunch right now? I know we're, and, and the chamber usually comes, right? They come to this, they usually come with a full council. They usually should be coming here, but they come with a full council, and they make this very, they make the same comment every year, and I'm not sure how strong it is. They send us a letter, and they go back to the group saying, we testified, but I just don't get, no one's calling us saying we need to have these tax rates down. I'm not getting the full, but, of force of small businesses saying, we can't afford to have our business here in the city. So saying all that stuff, can you give me some insight as to the small business environment?
You know, I, I think Abel Vargas, again, our development director, probably has the best pulse on the small businesses. I don't deal with them on a daily basis, so I don't think I'm the, the right person for that one. But, but again, yeah, the, the, if somebody, Chamber usually speaks in behalf of the businesses, and, and somebody has to advocate for the commercial property owners.
If it's all right with you, I'm going to put my colleague on the spot. Can I put you on the spot, Mr. DePena? You're a small business owner in the city. What's your, can you give me some insight as to, you, you travel in those circles with small business owners, what, what are they feeling right now?
You know, when the, when the city have a problem, any situation, looking for money from the small business pocket, that's no, that's no new. But I think the cities support, are looking for another option. For example, for what reason, increase the taxes for small business, and the small business in this city don't receive nothing back. The city don't support small business because don't have any problem for loan, nothing, only take money. I think one solution is that the city have a lot of property, empty lots, building, empty. For what reason, I don't understand, the, the city don't sell more empty lot and be, building, have a lot of building, empty. That's not real solution for the city take money to this business every year. Every year, small business pay more, 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 more taxes, increase taxes, and that's not help the small business. The small business law is, is a creative job. Eighty, I think 80% local employee, small business, create a job for the small, for the, for the community. But every year, every year, the city put more, more taxes to the small business, and that's, that not easy. That's not easy for the business, because small business don't qualify for, for loan, when looking for loan to the, and the, and the bank. And the city don't create any problem for support, small business, only put more taxes. You don't have any plans in the future for support business, small business, all it's only create more taxes, more taxes.
Well, and that's the purpose of, of this evening, you know, the cities and towns are able to, statute allows cities and towns to put a larger burden, burden of the tax levy on commercial, industrial versus the residential, and, and that's part of the statute. I imagine the statute became a statute because there's more residents voters than there are commercial, industrial property owners, so I think that's probably where, why that's in the legislature. I do want to make one point, though, commercial, industrial, they do receive city services, you know, road streets, plowing and all that stuff. There are, you know, police protection, they, they do receive some of the city services. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, the commercial property owners are paying a larger portion of the tax bill in, in, in proportion of their values. And that's because, and that's not uncommon in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think Maria did have a slide here, so you could see the single, as if, if we had a single tax rate, you could see, do you know what slide that is, Maria? Page eight? Okay, I think page eight. Okay, so here, there's a, you could see that with the single tax rate, yeah, that's the, that's the graph on the left is the single tax rate, and the graph on the right is with the residential factor. So on the left, if we didn't have a residential factor, 80% of the tax levy would be paid by residential property owners, or res, or the residential portion. And then by shifting the 1.75 over to commercial and industrial, the residential property tax burden is only 60, goes from 80% down to 65%. So if we had a single tax rate, the residences would be paying 80% of the total assessed value. By shifting the commercial, industrial is down to 65%. So that, page eight is the graph that kind of explains that.
When you say residency, is that three-family, family?
Yes, I believe that's a...
Or single?
Singles, single families, multifamilies, apartment complexes, condos, oh, sorry. That would be single families, multifamilies, apartment complexes, condos, that's considered residential. And then commercial would be any businesses or industrial, personal property, that would all fall under the commercial rate.
All right, so thank you, Mr. DePena, for, you bring a valuable perspective that none of us, I don't think, you don't have that, do you? I suppose small business owner have, so thank you. My last question, are, are small businesses in our city generally, do the small business owners actually own the property, or oftentimes are they renting from a property owner?
Only, only couple of business owner is owning to the property, not too much.
So most of the time will find, they own the property themselves, or most of the time is the other way around?
No.
The other way around?
The majority, they lease the place.
So the, the property owner of the commercial building leases space to the businesses. So the business that is leasing would be responsible for the personal property, but the owner of the building would be responsible for the real estate taxes.
The owner of the property...
The owner of the property would be responsible for...
I think 75%, maybe 80, rent. Yeah, but when the city increases the taxes to the owner, transfer to the, to the, to the owner.
The business owner.
To the owner business, you know.
Great, well, that's very helpful, thank you very much. I also want to welcome Mr. Abdu here for this important vote coming up. So I don't have any more questions, is there anybody else have any questions or comments or motions? Okay, is there a motion that anybody would like to make at this point?
I'd like to make a motion that we send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation for the 1.75 factor.
Second.
Motion's been made to send it up with a factor of 175. It's been second, is there any discussion? You have a ring, and I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's one abstention, roll call, please. Can we get Mr. DePena, Mr. DePena, Mr. DePena? Right here, it's a small, that's the smallest, everything else is clear. Okay, I'll, I just want to call the question again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. The ayes have it. It's approved. So that's been up with a favorable recommendation. I don't, is there anything else on our agenda?
We don't have anything else.
All right. Motion to adjourn, motion's been made.
Second.
And second, all in favor say aye. The ayes have it.
This was a long one.